...at seven PM. We have a Florida Councilman, Councilman Merrill, not yet present, along with Town Minister of your eight and Tom Taylor Mason and Tom Clark. Hi, everyone. Please stand up for their needs.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand as one nation under God, universal, representative, and sovereign all.
Thank you. Item on the agenda is to read the reading. I give...
A motion to re-convince.
The move by Councilwoman Witter, may I have a second? Second by Councilwoman. All in favor?
Aye.
You're going to oppose the motion here. The next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. I get a motion to adopt the agenda.
Well, okay.
I'm going to adopt the agenda. The move by Councilwoman Witter, may I have a second?
Aye.
Second by Councilwoman Ellis. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the motion here. Alright, we're going to, um, first item on the agenda. We have announcements and confirmation. And of course, we're going to ask you, um, chief of staff for the county here to give us my face.
Thank you.
Um, there's a, you can turn on this little business on a box. And that might help. I don't know if you can turn it off.
No. No, you can do that. You'll be able to. You know, I was going to... Anyway. Mayor, Councilmen, just thank you for inviting me to the annual visit from the commissioners. I certainly did a great reason. I want to bring you up to some of the lot of things that go on. And to answer some of your questions, talk about some of the dynamics going on in County. And the effects of the city, of course. I appreciate you can get the top of the list. That says one of two things. Either one, you want to hit the out there or you really like me. I'm going to go with the latter. I appreciate that. Some of the things that the county's doing, obviously, um, we have a great slate of commissioners working hard to bring Lincoln County together. And part of that is me coming out coordinating with communities. I know your administrator is getting well, uh, first with some of my staff, uh, in things that we can help you out with. And that's what my staff is there for. I mean, some of the, uh, what we're doing in GIS, we just finished the equal two. We have now documented all of Lincoln County, uh, in GIS down to three inches. So you will have an opportunity to access the county's information, uh, and save you a lot of money to enter on GIS and planning, all those uses that you can use for that. And that's where our IT person is obviously, um, well, first in helping you out, showing you how to access those and so on. We spent about $368,000 to get that done. The state was going to fly some new palaces anyway because they're required to do that in two years. We said, fly full things. We've got your trails, everything current this year. It should be up and running in September, no later than October to have access to that, which is what we set up a lot in the planning. There's a number of things, um, we also did. We started economic development department this year. We brought in, uh, Bob Key, who was a former commissioner. And he's right in African in the planning office. Of course, he lives in Danes, so it's here more valid. We brought him on because he's well versed in upper long valley and helps, uh, kind of build the dynamic a whole more up here. We have a different economic, um, arena in the valley than we do in the South Lincoln County. South Lincoln County's had the investor here at small mom and pop businesses and, you know, trying to keep that a little fair and solid. So he's really up here trying to help that out. He's trying to build the, um, um, the Chamber of Commerce up here. So that was part of the thing we sent the docs there and asking you to. So we said, sure, you can go and work and come up with that. I mean, that would be good venue to really reach out, um, with, um, bringing it to like what started out in GIS to Wyoming. We found, talking to the governor, there's something, somehow they get closer to that content of life and forget that that's a mine exists. But that's my job. I get over there regularly, make sure I'm interfacing, remind them that we do exist and we do have something to offer for them, for their work. One of the things that we put under him was a red board, which still helps all the new programs. We fund that every year so they always have, um, money for new programs and athletic things and recreation. And Brett Roberts is the chair of that. Bill for the Virginia, more money there. We also put travel and tourism under him. One of the things we just recently did was to, um, get a high commission and create a resolution and committee. We run our lodging tax on a committee. The reason we do that is because we want to create a fourth power score, right? You each have your own fourth power score that you're following, statute, that kind of guys, your lodging tax, and we wanted you to add a sixth over that part that comes to the county. And we've got, I don't know, a hundred, fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in that account. We have another 200,000. So we just saw this good way of bringing the cities together in union. So we appointed everyone a geological chairman or their designated bond to that committee. So every city has a people representation. The commissioner then appoints three members and they're the ones who decide to give you that point, uh, county share is of that money. We bring in about 25,000 dollars a year. They had sat on it for about three or four years, not spending it. The commissioner kind of said, start giving this money out there. So we've supported the barge, um, the Lilyfield, we supported the marathon up here this year. We supported the music vest that was in Kodiak last year. We call it the American cowboy. We also sponsored, um, two dances. Last year this year for the song competition there. So we've done that and we've sponsored the bear hats. We gave 20,000 to the Oyster Ridge this year to really promote that because they were starting a little bit more and we want to keep that alive. That's a lot of sales. So he's running economic development, travel and tourism, uh, assisting with grants and Mary Crossman and then course and recreation. So I think that's enough for him. So what we did down south was we entered into a minimum criteria management, who is putting together an improvement service district. That improvement service district is for the industries to come together, how do the counties say, here's some common themes in the industrial zone, uh, south of Cameron and Cameron. And we know that's really the engine to the county that builds a lot of assessed value. This is important for private tasks, um, to the county. Criterion is, uh, breaking back agriculture to Lincoln County. We're looking at putting a hill bar, a sail bar, and a feedlot right at St. George. Right to go build, uh, it'll be a great asset to that. We're looking at putting an asphalt plant just outside of a path. So we're really spreading a lot of what we're going to economic, what we're trying to build. Some of the things that we're looking at on the horizon, we talked about investor side before, um, we have, um, Pacific West and, or Pacific Southern, Pacific West come in char mines. We're in, they aren't fair share of that. Out of about 76 million between three industrial products last year, 26 million came to the county. And it was primarily, um, helped with the smaller towns because they were in the mapping zone until it came to Cameron unit line. And Cameron, you know, one of these interests, because what happens is companies take, come in and say, grow virtually 185 million ounce, 200 million. They have to do industrial site. They have to, from, from. So Terracotta comes in and says, well, we're really big and that's great. They go down there. Cheyenne tells them what matters. Who's the impact of communities? I thought it was funny that it's located in Cameron, but they went 110 miles to the east to include the Oxton's area. Now I said, you know something, because the industrials council, if it's not on the map, you have to defend white and family. We were able to get after $500,000 out of Cameron. And I basically made the argument, you go 110,000 miles that way, you'd come 90 miles more. Let's be honest. So a lot of new things there. It really runs, brought Southwest well together, doing those three industrial sites. And that's really what my role is, is to fight for that. The other thing we're fighting for is DIBA. So, um, well, before I go to there, we do have Blue Spruce that will be outside of ours. We're in charge of bringing their cans on that. And only 30 miles over they build this growth forest, we're going to try to bring some of you guys in. We'll see how that map comes out and see what you get. But we believe Blue Spruce will be the next one. After that road, we'll make way west, which will be the Rock Mountain Power Power Rock. And that'll be right along the south tier of Salt Creek and Pass, which again, we think we can expand and try to do some of that as well. Important that is, even if it's just 100,000 dollars, it's a good chunk of money. We'll do it like a cab, which allows you freedom to spend a bunch of money, unless you have a specific project and then you have to spend your own money. Try not to tie anything. So that's kind of what we see on the horizon for industrial side. Frontier, carbon solutions are already, um, drilling their first class six wells. Mosses giving glass air burn and Scott Mills are both by Ranger, but they affect Lincoln County because they're injecting into Lincoln County. We're trying to get them to put the pipe car on so right on, um, Mr. Collins' ranch, this side of the Lincoln County line, Northern County line, point of building, right? It's literally Lincoln County, yes or yes, it says. And sales tax is a one day resupply, right? So, that being said, we're trying to push some of those to make sure that they utilize Lincoln County, nothing else for a stage in the area. If we're not going to be the main site, we'll let you story stuff here. I will tell you that, um, our planning director, we have a cache off of the New York Road. You guys see these big white modulars driving on the highway? There's two roads that came through, the first 91 are done. It's actually a hotel, a modular hotel that's going to be in Kansas. We tried to put it on a little place, a recreation place. They didn't want to pay sales tax. Well, we already had 360,000 dollars distributed to the county. So if you're going to see a little bump up here in this quarter, uh, in sales tax with that, when they're done August 15th, and they'll leave it as it was before, we won't see them again until October, not with 360,000. So 700,000 just because we were on our toes of planning and so. And then you've heard a lot about us, I wouldn't say flapping down, but actually just many people know what the rules are and say, hey, we all live by the same rules and we're going to pull Jake down a border and just picture a water. And, uh, he can't, he's got a great job. And I hope that there's someone who's, who had my part. I'll be glad to answer any questions, of course. So, um, sales tax revenue was brought up to me, the gentleman I was sitting here. And, uh, I don't win those numbers. I've got 8% around the wind loop, not through, I'm a, I'm a division. Also puts out the credit. And that comes out quarterly for the legislators to know what we're doing there. And historically, I've gotten the credit report to be right on one thing. It's almost wrong. So, and that's actually an Al Harris from Green River, Sweetwater, Al Radio. That's his joke that he told him on day, so I will share that one. We are looking, lodging tax, um, looking good. I mean, we've actually been given another distribution here. I took the treasurer today to, um, saw her walking into some houses and how that falls out. And I don't have so much information here. I know that, uh, we stopped the, uh, the company, the company, we know about the company problem in lower and other valley. We're trying to look at acting and paying and say, what can we do for pretty treatment? We have, we actually paid 78,000 for, um, what is now Corax, what's here is engineer to come up and look at how the animals set up. Both of the towns really weren't conducive in time to discuss it. We are putting more in, um, the industrial site in South Lincoln County and helping them out with some commercial, uh, to give them the water in Cameron or so, like that happened. So we'll do some things down south and, yeah, some second, that's close. Or rarely, we stopped the illegal government into the store and holes, but we still have the problem of where did they go? So we're going to try to get rid of, uh, off all of those vendors and see if we can move that port. I know that we also stopped burning, uh, on a pit here, I mean, airport runway. So those are the kind of things that we're going to help specifically some of that ranch because of the price of it. Because I can go on for, I mean, that is, all kinds of information.
I'd just like the sounds of, uh, Jake, sales tax.
I know property tax is hard this year. We're, we are probably going to Kevin Street and negative budget this year to prove legislators. We are in the middle of a 14 million dollar, um, district court expansion. Our district court is on the second floor of courthouse. We have no HKA. It's just a matter of time before that comes apart. So we're kind of forced to build it now and we built it several years ago. It'd have been a cycle more cheaper than what we're going to hit this year. But we are a few more cash in there. So we're not looking to do any new bonding to that. If next year, um, the referendum goes through, which is the fear of all of us, we should be, um, for a perfect constitutional victory, snapback. Then we're going to have to redo the policy, add up the original justice that, or we'll just rewrite those, um, with the same payout. And hopefully, it's just ready to be back now. But since we're talking about, uh... Yes, thank you, Mayor. We've asked all of you to look at your current community overlays. I sent out the overlays on the animal bars, land use regulations. Every community does say, okay, what is it that we want around our community? What do we want to tell the counties, how do you zone, that we have a developer come in? If they're in that overlay, this is what you cannot do, right? One of yours is, I believe, bottom, industrial park is not allowed to your current overlay. So what that was, my plan is to, is then somebody comes in and says, hey, I want to put a commercial, you know, pedestal chemical across the street here. It's an absolute gun, right? Because once commissioners accept that overlay, that's a part of our land use regulation. And we haven't updated it in a few years, so we want to give you the chance, uh, to look at those and tell us if there's any change in sheeting within the next 68 days and we find this first one. So when I ask to have them back, and then we'll go through the process. So there'll be several level hearings, um, that they'll be able to discuss and maybe, you know, who wants to buy, who doesn't want to buy. Obviously, we just get the transportation map, it's your plan, which is all the major roads. My extreme obviously is a real critical piece to us and it all comes down to, obviously, we need to provide areas, the usements and, um, and expand that. The problem with, uh, we might end up with a major collector, so it's just a matter of time. We'll get it on the place that it's a free. We saw Star Valley Road changing, that was a 12-year process. So this is not something I'll solve overnight, but we'll keep it on our list and keep it moving forward to, uh, change my string as possible. Now, one of the reasons we went to over there is back then, prior to 2001, we had a mile limit between the states and the counties. And state statute said, look, head to a three, for any development, you can have one mile of reasons. Which ended up with was the thing, public place where there were parts where we could agree. So that's where the overlay is committed, it's a commission. How many of you have your opportunities? They'll have to say so when you lost that mile limit. We've had several discussions with them. What we opted to do because their real issue is cash flow. Uh, and, and cash flow works itself out over time. They have a lot of, I can, I can personally look at their accounts, um, receivables. But if they, if it was as special as we thought it was, what they share publicly, then it tells me they have a lot of that 120-plus days. So what we did was we advanced them, the money that they had gotten from their bill letting from these last three months. So they have a future cash right now, which you can continue to tell right here, their cowboy, it's something that that one 20 is short now. Problem with healthcare has been 20 years and a half. So the issue was is, law says that insurance company doesn't even have to pay them 45 days. They only have to acknowledge the bill. So they're already going to be past 45 days on average in your accounts receiving. Now, that means you've got to have a lot of cash on hand, especially if you're taking these positions. So when you had a hiccup, they gave them their software and, yeah, it's just been taking a little time. So commissioners that have a little extra time, um, and what happened with that. And it was a zero net because over here, if they were already going to get, I mean, commissioners hesitate, when that three nails come in, we just take that three. So it's in you and zero interest. And what we're going to have them to worry, that's what we need, EMS is coming up on everybody's radar. How will we ever address EMS? I know a lot of people ask to, um, you know, make it be a essential service, which in everybody's mind, by its definition, we already know, oh, well, it's a essential service and somebody's got to provide it, which really isn't the time. It's just a use of words. Nobody's really entitled to provide it. So you really don't solve anything by creating it as a essential service. But I think we have a responsibility to acknowledge it and say, how are we going to address it? The most successful EMS is hospital care, because they're the ones who give the controls from that and then how do you manage your, kind of the hospital system? Or two, you put it in requiring parts. Those are the really two that are the most successful in money to manage. We're on, that's on our radars, folks. Other issues? I really appreciate your time, Mayor and Councilman. Trevor, always a question, we're really, we're glad you have on board. This is a great long content, using a lot. Hopefully, we're doing more than millions to support, sort of our rights, that's what the commissioners do. I've been helping. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Why don't I go, it's very emotional. You want to use it?
Hi, um, I am on the agenda here to talk to the town.
Town of Star Valley Ranch, Wyoming, Arbor Day, Provo, patient, June 14th, 2025. Whereas the town of Star Valley Ranch understands the importance of trees, the health and well-being of our town residents, and whereas the town of Star Valley Ranch understands the trees are growing, provide shade, reduce steam, and clean the air, reduce oxygen, provide wildlife habitat, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance economic growth, like that, and beauty of our community. And whereas planting trees is created together, is a source of annual spiritual renewal, whereas the town of Star Valley Ranch wishes to celebrate Arbor Day each spring to remind ourselves the importance of trees in our community. Now, therefore, we, the town council, we are at the town of Star Valley Ranch, Wyoming, to hereby proclaim new 14th, 2025, Arbor Day, celebrated in our community. Would you stare up? We have here two star hands, and they give 2025.
I want to agenda, I have a couple of comments coming up the agenda. There's been a couple of comments, um, over the end. Also, we have a couple of comments, which I need to, not counting on the agenda, but we get to work on the other items before we have a comment. We have, we're on. I have a couple. Moving on. I'd like to, like, attend that I'm, or I'm going to document the agenda. These items that are on. On the agenda, we have the head of the major team for expression, the major team for ability, the major team for expression. Also, we have numerous people who are, again, not going to be all of them, basically, all of our people. Also, we have, just wrote a case. I get it, we're not the agenda. Sorry. Oh, it's two reports. Just great. Uh, we have, well, we're supporting all of the members. Here we go. National Resources Board, by any permission. That one, those that have my name, by, right, if I can, where's the John, like Daniel and Lee. It's so, we get very long. Also, I need to second just a question. There's special teams, lots of reports, the county shared topics, but I'm sharing the fact of board, or judgment report. With that. Any questions? All about.
So I just, that people that are on, you know, support that, I don't have to name. There's sure, uh, people that have jobs that were aspiring, who are, who may apply with the team, ask the board members that have designs, um, are, there are additional people on each of those boards that can generally, most of our boards have, by my version, are the ultimate.
We try to stagger, uh, the time as well, so that we're not, it's getting really inspired. I get a motion to, like, example.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On the agenda, we have five, eight ordinances. First item is eight, eight ordinance, 25, you are trying to bring the third being asked by Councilwoman Ellis.
Yeah, I include the table, ordinance, uh, 2025, that's our fourth, um, of any, my excuse, except for Sony, of July 8th, due to the number of, uh, potential changes that came in late in our work session, maybe 28.
Motion, eight or four, I would, or by a second. By Councilwoman Ellis, eight or four. Definitely by, I would. Session. Dr. Juon. I call it favor.
I'm a caller.
Now, the final ordinance, 25, 05.
Yeah, we'll walk through the, the changes that we had between the second reading and the third reading. Uh, if we, and just kind of, next, next. So, so anything in orange has changed from the, from the second reading. Uh, we, uh, we did round up the number for the property tax to just kind of a round number. Uh, that's the only change on the general fund revenue. Uh, we're up to, we're, we're still down 22% year over year. That's our, that's the latest numbers we've received from the county. Uh, so we should expect that to be down about 430,000 this, this coming fiscal year. The, the rest of them, we've left the same. We've debated a lot on the fifth penny in sales and use tax and we're, we're, we're going to reduce one and keep the other one high and in the middle, we'll, we'll reach it, uh, hopefully. Uh, on the lodging tax, we've also just rounded that one up to 25,000 to make it Uh, on the lodging tax, we've also just rounded that one up to twenty-five thousand to make it easy, uh, to remember the number. Interest income has, uh, gone down because of our reserves and using those for the capital plans that we have, the capital spending for twenty twenty six. Um, which is significant. The general fund, then, total revenue, we're targeting two point eight, just under two, two point eight million dollars. Uh, it's reduced from the second reading about thirty-eight thousand, which is due to the property tax and the lower interest rate, or, or lower interest income. Uh, the general fund expenses, uh, administration, we've just made some made, some minor, minor tweaks. Uh, we continue because we've had some attrition and we've hired new people. We've, we've changed a couple of items in the salary and wages and benefits area. And those two, uh, the administration on operations roots have us, have a little bit of a change. And then in travel and tourism, we've increased that up to twenty-five thousand dollars for the year as income. So overall, total expense, or expenses, total expenses is two point two 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 million, which is, uh, twenty-one thousand higher than we had in the second meeting. On the capitals, or on the, so general, or general fund excess, uh, our third reading, we are down to an excess of five hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, which is fifty-eight, fifty-nine thousand dollars lower than what we had in the second reading. That's due to the higher expenses and lower revenue. Um, the capex, this is the one everybody wants to see because this the pavement is in the budget, okay? And we have, we, we feel comfortable or confident that the six hundred thousand dollars that we have put in there now is a pretty good placeholder because we're going to use the internal resources that we have to do a lot of the road rates. And, uh, and that will help tremendously. But the Vista pavement, everybody wants done, and we put it in there. That's the additional six hundred thousand dollars of spend. The chip seal for plat five is still two hundred and twenty, and it's in there. And the, and that, that was just a slight increase. And then the plat twenty-one chip seal is two hundred thousand. So again, those are the ones that, and we had a hundred and eighty in there before. So those are the major ones. The two additions that we have put in here are the bottom ones, a tire balancer, because without that, we're spending more money in, uh, replacing tires because we're not balancing them on a regular basis. Tire balancer will help that. And the additional truck of thirty-five thousand dollars has also been placed in the budget. And those are two additions for the total capex. So capex, the first column is the authorizations. That, that column, we can't see the header, but the first column, that's two point, sorry, one point three million dollars almost. And then we're going to spend almost all of it between now and the end of, uh, June next year, one point two six five million. That's all in capex, and that's where a lot of our reserves are going. And, but it's time to, time to do some of these projects. Um, keep going. On the, and this is just showing kind of where we think the reserve is going to be. First column is the estimate that we're using of two point one million dollars of reserves when we finish June. And at the end of next year, we're going to be about four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars less. So we'll be down to the one point four million dollars, uh, six hundred thousand dollars less, seven hundred thousand, in, in the, uh, total general fund of one point four million dollars. And then on the water fund side, the only items that we have changed here is some base rate, uh, some fees. Uh, we'll get to a fee resolution here shortly. But the interest is, is we've actually increased that a little bit, uh, on, based on the, the month-to-month balances that we see. And when the spending occurs, the base fee has gone up to by a fraction of a dollar, it's fifty cents per, um, on the, uh, monthly use, uh, base fee. Service available, availability fee, that's the twenty-eight dollars. The sixty-seven dollars went up, what was it? I think a dollar. Another fifty cents, sixty-eight, sixty-eight fifty, dollar fifty. So we're using fifty cent increments, uh, to get to that point. So that's why the twenty-two thousand dollars higher in the base fee and on the service available fee, which is the lots that don't have meters, is, uh, is the twenty-eight fifty now. And the system development fees, we're getting a lot of tapping. Those are seventy-five hundred dollars apiece. And so that, right now, we have beefed that up from six that we originally had in the budget to fifteen. And we feel very confident that we'll hit the fifteen, we may go over that. So that's the water fund. We're going to come in at about one point eight three six million in revenue in the water fund, is, is our targeted amount, which is seventy-five thousand dollars higher than what we did in reading two. Uh, getting tired, expenses. The only thing that we changed here was some salaries because we hired some new people and changed things around a little bit. And so that's actually a reduction in salary and wages and benefits in the water fund. And, uh, and so that brings our expenses down twenty-five thousand. So by increasing revenue seventy-five and reducing expenses, our, our operating side is going to be about a hundred thousand dollars. Okay? And last but not least is the, uh, we can, that's just what I just said. On the capital side, the major projects that we're going to be doing next year, the authorization amount is the two point four million. That's how much we're going to authorize to be spending. And in the third reading, we're coming in right a little bit above because of the top project, which is completing the twenty twenty-three water project this year into twenty twenty-six, which will be about eight hundred forty-two thousand dollars. So everybody always asks, aren't we done with the water project yet? No, there's still a bunch of cul-de-sacs and little insular roads that still need to be done. And that's targeted for the spending because that was authorized back in. Um, so gives you an opportunity to look at the projects, the water efficiency meters and the resident replacement meters are the two that we absolutely feel like we need to do to be able to read how much water we're using and what the intake, uh, what the water coming into the tanks actually is. And the Green Canyon water tank of a half a million dollars, that's a lining now instead of a replacement. And so that's the, that's the big change. Uh, we've just changed it on description. We've left it at a half a million dollars to spend, but the amount authorized, I think we have million, what was it, million? Million two? Million two in there. Now we're not having to spend that. It's going to be spending only a half a million dollars. So bottom line, that's it, cash reserves. Uh, again, we, we're going to end the year, we believe, right around four million dollars, uh, only a few weeks to go. So we will see how close we are on our estimate. Uh, we just know one thing, and it's going to be wrong, using quote unquote. But we'll see if we're close. On the third reading, our, our, uh, our reserves are going to drop down to one point seven million because of all the capital budgets looking at. And, um, so that's kind of where we are. Any, I guess, any questions, anything? Is there anything down below?
I motion that we approve the twenty twenty, by twenty twenty six, uh, operating capital budget for the Town of Star Valley Ranch. Ordinance like, uh, like that, yes.
What is the life expectancy of the meters that you're going to have?
Ten years.
Ten years. So you're looking at ten, you can come in and out. And I do. You're going to change every year out?
We do it every ten years. We're not going to have to do a lot of digging, it's just replacement of the meter, not the meter pit. So it's just a meter inside there. They have to be accessible.
But the idea is the software that's going to be with these new meters, it'll get so much better than what we've got now with the makeshift. It's, you're going to really, might as well really think it's a, it's kind of a hard, hard problem. It's going to cost us more to do it down the road.
So those that are listening, get a few. Any other?
Is there fifteen new meters, new meters? Do you take a senior or?
Some of the meter pit, like, unless we're trying to. I don't, I don't know what answer to that one, which is basically, the timing thing.
Yeah, it is a timing thing.
But if they were just putting, they have to swap. No, no, it's not the ground yet. That's, that's the goal. We only had twelve of the old ones remaining, right?
Yeah, right around there.
So, and most of those are now in the ground, right?
Um, I'd have to exact for sure what Gavin was putting in.
That may have been a problem, but honestly, council, we did a review, and I totally blew over them because I got excited. When I talk industrial site, it's all the way to W. I forgot to tell you about sales catch. The projection is five million dollars a year, but it has five, when the basis start, uh, this fall or early spring. So you will shortly see a quarter of that, um, through, before the end of this budget session. And that's five million for the whole county. Well, you're modest based on the last sentence, but, uh, I forgot to give you that information. I thought I'd throw that in, so if you're, you're, insurance will be a little better.
Yeah, I, I also, if we, if you're pursuing grants for, we're going to do that.
Any questions? Any questions from the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, have you talked about?
Go.
Moving on, we're going to ordinance twenty twenty five, authorization.
Ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh six, five fifteen land uses, except one fifteen buildings, one fifteen buildings. Uh, no changes, this is the first reading, this is updating building codes to twenty twenty one. I move, uh, approval, uh, ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh six.
And a second. Call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Resolution number twenty five dash oh six dash ten dash oh two. Resolution to establish the fees and rates for the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six in the town's water need to. I motion, uh, we have a, I motion that, uh, all the, the points that are, are identified, uh, be approved by the county. Also.
I can't, you know, do you want to make that?
And we did use, to be consistent with the budget, we did use the CPI core, not the, the water. We'll, we'll make sure that we do that next year, okay?
The only other idea I want to bring up is the town's process of updating our master plan. Uh, and the draft chapters, the first, and the master plan chapters, the planning mission, council. That are paid on the counter site, so those draft chapters, we probably, well, a lot of them, I mean, later this calendar year, uh, for additional public comments. The goal of being approved or updated by the county, is for more information on that one.
I motion, we deserve a meeting. That's the budget is done.
That's the budget is done.